Okay, we have all council members present. Good evening. We would like to call to order the council meeting for October 2nd.
All right, start the roll. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitz.
Here.
And Council President Wood.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At, um, this time, we, um, move into meditations and the pledge. Is there anyone who, um, would like us to remember somebody at this particular time? Councilmember Brown.
Uh, thank you. Um, to remember, um, Pastor Mendoza from Aaronath the Church. Um, he's a great man. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else we'd like to remember at this time? Seeing none, we could please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands on one nation, united as one.
You have before you? The council proceedings for September 8th.
Uh, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. With that, I'd move the minutes of the September 18th meeting as written.
All right, we have a motion on the minutes. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, next we are to special ceremonies. It's a tribute and recognition of NAACP Freedom Fund Celebration.
And Vice President, um, Garza, if we have anyone here representing the NAACP, if you could come down into the well.
So I have a resolution for the city council that I'd like to read. So please bear with me, you guys. I want to give everybody the same respect when they have a resolution. So whereas the Lansing branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, is celebrating its 57th Annual Freedom Fund Celebration, Thriving Together. And whereas in 1919, the Lansing branch of the NAACP was chartered under the leadership of Mr. C. A. Campbell, who fought diligently to enforce civil rights laws for the community, and for over 100 years, the NAACP has led the movement on social rights and equity, equality, I apologize. And whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People works at the local, state, and national levels to ensure political, educational, social, and economic equality of all citizens, and to eliminate and remove all barriers of racial discrimination. And whereas the 2023 keynote speaker of the NAACP, uh, national president and CEO Derrick Johnson, an American lawyer and humanitarian, and the NAACP Fighting Fund for Freedom, AKA Freedom Fund Banquet began in 1953 on a national level as a 10-year program to intensify efforts to complete the job of emancipation. Near the culmination of this effort, Medgar W. Evers, a heroic NAACP Mississippi Field Secretary, was killed by an assassin's bullet. Prompted by an toupee tribute to Mr. Evers, NAACP Chairman Bishop Stevens Spotswood proclaimed at an NAACP convention in July 1963 that the NAACP Fighting Fund for Freedom would continue until the job of emancipation was complete. So let it be resolved, the Lansing City Council hereby acknowledges the Lansing Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People on its 57th Annual Freedom Fund Celebration on October 7th, 2023, and express our administration and gratitude to its members for their achievements and commitment to the City of Lansing and its residents. We applaud the NAACP Lansing Branch for many years of its success and diligence in the fight for equality, and anticipate many more to come. With that, I'd move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Harold Pope. I am the, uh, president of the Lansing Branch of the NAACP. As stated, we were founded back in 1919, and here we are, 104 years later, continuing the efforts, uh, to fight for equality and the elimination of discrimination wherever it may be. Um, I want to thank the city council for this resolution. I hope that I get to see you and any others, uh, at our event this, uh, Saturday. Uh, as was stated, our national president and CEO will be in attendance, and I would look forward to a, uh, invigorating evening as we recognize, uh, key members of this, of the, uh, community, for the community's service, uh, as well as we, um, providing scholarships to youth, and then we're also going to recognize our youth council. So again, I want to say thank you, and hope to see you, uh, Saturday evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is a tribute to Hispanic Heritage Month.
All right, if we can have those that are representing Hispanic Heritage Month, please come into the, um, well.
Awesome.
Yes.
You guys want to just come around? You guys look beautiful. Keep going.
Yeah, all the way around. Yep.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So whereas Hispanic Heritage has been observed beginning in 1968 as Hispanic Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded to a month by President Reagan. And whereas Hispanics are the second largest ethnic group in the United States and the largest minority in the United States, the City of Lansing, Michigan is home to 12, 112,000 citizens. Of those 112,000 citizens, 13% are Hispanic and contribute to the growth, diversity, and strength of our community by sharing their unique culture relative to music, dance, history, art, language, religion, arts cuisine, mu- uh, politics, and literature. And whereas the majority of Hispanic Americans living in Lansing, Michigan, were born and raised here and have significantly contributed to the diversity of the city, and is reflected in education, construction, doctors, lawyers, police officers, firefighters, elected officials, dancers, singers, computer technicians, real estate business drivers, electricians, scientists, pharmacists, professors, mechanics, bus owners, nurses, engineers, dentists, migrant workers, and more and more and more. So in addition to enriching our community through culture, the Hispanic community has enhanced the economy of Lansing through significant progress in business ownership, law, homeownership, agriculture, healthcare, and other significant parts of our city. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides the residents of Lansing an opportunity to share their, the variety, achievements, and contributions that make up the Hispanic community, whose ancestors originated from Mexico, Puerto Rico, Cuban, uh, Cuba, the Dominican Republic, Central America, South America, or Spain. Now there, let it be resolved, the Lansing City Council hereby recognizes September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month 2023 in the City of Lansing. And with that, I'd move the resolution.
We, we have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. My name is Maria Luz Salas Arambula. I've been doing Hispanic Heritage Culture Awareness for 43 years through the Lansing Parks and Recreations. So I am very honored to receive this, and thank you, and I hope you see us in the community performing and modeling and demonstrating the 21 Spanish-speaking countries. Thank you.
Uh, hello, I am the, uh, my name is Amos Amigón. I am the vice president and brother of Lanatehify, Lanetourney Incorporated, and also the president of the Multicultural Greek Council, which, uh, I represent all minorities on campus through Greek life, and yeah.
I thought it was important because they were there Saturday all day assisting in the festival in every single manner, these young Latino students from MSU. On behalf of our committee, there's Maria here, and, um, we just want to thank the city council for allowing us to be here. So, um, it is important for us to be here, to be recognized, and each year we're going to continue to grow and grow and grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, give you a moment, uh, clear out, and then we're next on to comments by the council member and the city clerk.
Uh, council member comments. Council members, do we have any? Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, just, I actually just have a few. Um, the first is that our SWAG monthly meeting, Southwest Action Group monthly meeting is, uh, taking place tomorrow, October 3rd. Uh, starts at 6:30 PM. As always, we are at the Southside Community Coalition, not to be confused, sorry, with the El Frieda Schmidt Southside Community Center. Uh, so that location is actually 2101 West Holmes. Um, I encourage folks to get out, learn about what's going on all across southwest Lansing, and then also find out opportunities, um, to get involved in the work. Um, I want to, uh, thank a number of folks. We had our, uh, second SWAG, uh, annual barbecue, uh, that was, uh, Friday, September 22nd, uh, and it was an awesome, awesome celebration of the community. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, the entire SWAG team for their work in terms of coordination, in terms of execution of that particular barbecue. Um, Jose Moore, who did a fantastic job, um, DJing and providing music, uh, loved the city, uh, who actually prepared the food, grilled the food, um, and it was, uh, an awesome spread. Uh, Chris Swope and his team, uh, for being present, uh, they were registering voters and, and things of that nature. Uh, we had the Carroll, uh, Capital Area District Library on hand. Uh, we had the Lansing Parks and Recreation Play Patrol, uh, the list goes on and on. But it was, uh, again, a fantastic time. And I also want to thank, uh, Paul Anderson, uh, specifically, uh, who is our SWAG Development Specialist for putting on, I mean, he put a lot of work into this, uh, coordinated all the different groups and volunteers, and, and it was just, uh, again, an awesome event. Uh, the Lansing Neighbourhood Organization, uh, so this is the, um, neighborhood that, uh, sits in the City of Lansing, but also in Eaton County. Uh, so this is the neighborhood in the City of Lansing that is just west of Waverly. Um, they are meeting, uh, this Thursday, uh, at 6:30 PM at Wood Creek School. This is their monthly meeting. Uh, they do recess over the summer, uh, because the schools are closed, so they are, um, kickstarting their, their monthly meetings again. Uh, again, that's this Thursday, 6:30 PM at Wood Creek School at 4,000 Wood Creek Lane. Um, if you have not been involved in their work, uh, they have done just a tremendous job the past couple of years, uh, advocating for neighborhood grants and community cleanups and beautification projects, sign replacement projects, uh, a number of, uh, projects within their park. Uh, they've advocated for, uh, corridor improvement, uh, amenity, uh, installation, things of that nature on South Waverly. Uh, just an incredible job, uh, and we certainly, I hope you get out and, uh, participate in that work. And then lastly, um, our next constituent contact meeting will be October 14th. Um, anybody from really across the City of Lansing is more than welcome to come. Uh, we do, uh, kind of hyper-focus, at least for a portion of the meeting, um, on issues that are pertinent in southwest Lansing, but then we do co- cover, uh, issues, uh, kind of from that broader perspective. Um, that is October 14th at 10 AM, uh, 10 to 12 noon. Uh, feel free to stop in, uh, anytime during that window of time. Uh, you certainly don't need to stay the entire time. We are at 5825 Wise Road at El Frieda Schmidt Southside Community Center. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there other, uh, council member comments? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. On behalf of City Clerk Chris Swope, I just have a few things to share about the upcoming city election. I want to remind you that all voters have the choice to vote in one of three ways in a city primary. At home, with a ballot mailed to you, early, at the South Washington Election Unit, and of course, November 7th at your polling place. Those who have already signed up for the permanent ballot list or submitted requests for this election, they should have already received their ballot, or should, um, or will do so by Wednesday. So if you do not have your ballot, um, in your Wednesday mail, then please give us a call at 483-4131. That's 483-4131. But it's not too late to request a ballot. You have several more weeks to do so, and you can do so online at lancinenvote.gov. You can also now walk into the clerk's office here at City Hall or South Washington and be given an absentee ballot that you can vote or take at home with you. Then on Saturday, October 28th, we're holding our 30th Annual Trunk or Treat Souls to the Polls Event from 1 to 4 at the South Washington Election Unit Parking Lot. It's where we and a lot of community partners combine to drive through trunk or treat, and, at South Washington Parking Lot, along with voting, and we sneak in voting education. At the event, we have a special Halloween-themed ballot for all ages. They're available to vote on that day so that children can learn more and start to practice voting. It's also our first day of early voting. So to see a map of voting locations, link to voter registration and more, you go to, uh, lancinenvotes.gov. So next, we're on to community event announcements. Anyone in the audience has an event to share? They have a minute to speak?
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemetery is holding its annual 5K Run Walk inside Mount Hope Cemetery on Saturday, October 21st, beginning at 10 AM. You can come in and register, uh, earlier that morning, or pack it, pick up if you're registered online. It's the evening before at, from 4 to 6, at the cemetery courtesy office. This is our major fundraiser for the year, and the proceeds from this race support our restoration projects inside the cemeteries, our events, and our volunteer-staffed cemetery courtesy office. You can register online at runsignup.com with the title, uh, Race to Restore. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Hi, my name is Kelsey. Um, I'm with the Renus 2 Damn High Coalition, and we are going to the Housing Committee Meetings every Thursday at 10:30 at the Anderson Building. I believe it's floor 3, and we would love to see you come out. Um, so that's the Anderson Building at 10:30 AM every Thursday for the Housing Committee Meetings. You can ask the person at the lobby, um, at the desk there, or if you see people wearing red, go ahead and talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other community event announcements? Seeing none. We're next to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matter. We have, uh, about one more minute to speak, uh, one more minute to complete a blue sheet to speak on any items 1 through 22 on the agenda, which includes the consent agenda, resolution for action. So if you want to speak, you must sign in on the blue sheet. So now on to mayor's office comments.
No comments, Mr. Lawrence? All right, thank you.
Okay, then, we're public comment legislative matters. As I said, it's items 1 through 23, and...
Oh, before you start, councilmember Hussein, you have an item you need to pull, uh, you can...
Yes, and that's actually, yes, so that's actually item number 14. We were told, uh, but, well, I should say, we were alerted, uh, by code that that property has actually been brought up to code, uh, and so the tag has been removed.
That's, you still have permission to speak on that, but just so you know that that has...
Yep, number 14, and that, um, pertains to 1232 Pomp and the Make Safe from the Volition.
All right, thank you.
And then I'd also like to make, uh, council and the public aware, I do have one written public comment, um, from First Presbyterian Church, uh, in support of the rezoning. So if our first speaker is Loretta Sanaway, followed by Mitch Rice.
All right, I wanted to talk about the rezoning for the potential adaption for the City Rescue Mission to use those two buildings on West Kalamazoo. A couple of things, uh, I raised last time. I did get answers from them the next day, and those answers were satisfactory to me. Um, and I've learned that the properties currently in use, uh, are property, those are tax-exempt properties. So changing from the tax-exempt current owners of the property to the City Rescue Mission would not harm our tax base in any way, shape, or form. And furthermore, the Rescue Mission would not be asking for any tax breaks, or brown bills, or Oprah's, or any of those things that so often chip into whatever benefits there might be from a development. Um, I think we had one person last week who was a prop, or last time, who was a property owner and spoke against it because his thought was the residents of his properties wouldn't care to look down, so to speak, literally, physically, on the homeless outside of their windows. But I asked him, um, if not there, where. They have to be someplace, and there isn't sufficient space where they are now. I know that there's been some pressure from the Stadium District, from the, from the Love Nuts Facility, from the Myers, uh, City Market, and the hot, the hotel there, and the apartments there. But you know what? The Rescue Mission was there first, and it's been there a very long time, and they knew when they built that the Rescue Mission was there. So unless they're going to dangle out a bunch of money and say, "Here, if you'd like to move, we'll give you half a million bucks," um, I think they need to take that into account as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Speaker Mitch Rice, followed by DeJin Thompson.
Good evening, city council. I am commenting on items 19 and 22, the special land use permit for the, uh, properties on 415, 421 West Kalamazoo to authorize a sheltered care facility, and, uh, reap, residential adaptive reuse. Uh, the C- City Rescue Mission's been around for over 100 and some years, and it has been diligently trying to find more property in the city to, uh, be able to expand with the ever-growing, uh, problem of homelessness. And I'm in full support of them being able to make that transition, and I had spoke before. But since that, uh, previous meeting, uh, there were some issues, I think, that were confused as far as what we call discrimination and limiting. It is truly a faith-based organization. But the restrictions on following a faith-based code of ethics, I guess, is for the staff. I am a volunteer, and I don't know that I have ever seen discrimination, heard anybody say anything, and the people come and go. Yes, they do have, uh, some requirements to listen to things, but they don't turn the people away. They don't ask them at the front door about their orientation or their finances. Yes, they have to be, uh, nonviolent, and, uh, can't be under the influence too much of a level. But if they can't expand, we're just going to have more of a problem, and this is primary property to use for that. And I think it's very important that the council realize the differences between policy and practice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is DeJin Thompson, followed by Spencer Lippard.
Hi, my name is pronounced Gin, like G-I-N. Uh, so, uh, yeah, uh, as a, um, transgender woman, I would like to point out that, uh, we don't have a single homeless shelter in this city that does not discriminate against transgender people. Um, every single one of our, of our homeless shelters are, are funded by religious organizations, and as someone who has actively participated in trying to get a transgender woman a place to sleep in this city, it is impossible. I had to drive them to Grand Rapids. So, speaking on issue 19 of whether we should give a special land permit to the, uh, to the, uh, to the shelter, I think we should not. I think we should not be, like, accommodating people who discriminate and violate state, uh, state, uh, discrimination employment laws. Like, I'm looking at their, their statement of, like, employment is the City Rescue Mission doctrinal statement on human sexuality. They compare us to molesta- molesters, to people who practice bestiality and incest. Um, I'm sorry, but it's not possible to be a transgender person and feel comfortable to, like, put your life at, like, they're going to, like, be, feel like I can go to that place and be cared for. Like, you know, some people can, like, pretend to not be gay and go in and, like, sleep. Transgender people cannot pretend not to be. No, no one's looking at me and saying, like, "Oh, that person isn't trans," right? Like, I'm, I'm not a passing trans person, and many trans people who are homeless, many trans youth who are homeless, like, like, people, we've got people who, children, teenagers, who have been kicked out of their homes by their parents for being queer, and they have no place to go because all of the homeless shelters in this city already have the same attitude that their parents have who kicked them out of their home. So as an advocate for youth, as a transgender woman, I think we should not let this pass.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Spencer Lippard, followed by Luna Brown. You're passing? Okay. Uh, Luna Brown, followed by Kelsey Brien.
Hi, I'm Luna. Um, I'd like to speak in opposition to the rezoning. Again, this shelter discriminates openly against people, and they claim they don't turn people away. They may let you in if you're queer, but they will not protect you in any way. I have friends who've been jumped inside the shelters. I have a friend who was being harassed by people inside the shelter, and when they went to staff over it, the staff gave him a Bible and told him to pray about it. You know, I've, I've had to house multiple friends in the past two years who are trans, who did not feel safe going to any of our shelters in this city, and they had nowhere else to go. Like, the homelessness problem is bad in Lansing, and we do need more shelters, but giving money or rezoning, uh, for a shelter that's openly discriminating against people is not the right course of action. We need to actually, like, fund a shelter who is open and inclusive to all, and the city needs to actually do that because you, you've refused in the past to, to do so, claiming that we don't want to duplicate services. You wouldn't be duplicating services. You'd be giving people an actual safe place to go. And on top of that, like, cities who funded shelters on their own have found that they've actually made money back from their investments in the savings in emergency room visits, the savings in, uh, nonviolent arrests, and, and an overall improved quality of life of their citizens. So rezoning these buildings in order for a discriminatory business to expand is not something our city needs. We need real help, not people who are going to treat us like crap just because of who we are.
I, I'm asking, please, at this time, this is your opportunity to address council. We want to make sure that everyone feels welcome to come to the podium and state their, uh, opinions. We do not take applause during this part of the, uh, meeting at all. So...
Our next speaker is Kelsey Brien, followed by our last speaker, David Ellis.
Good evening. Um, I am opposed to the rezoning. Uh, I think it is impossible to hold these theological beliefs and not have them translate into real-world actions. Um, I am not opposed to religion. I'm not opposed to religious services. You know, uh, Christ, being Christ-like in the true sense of actions and not just words, and feeding the hungry and, and housing, like, that isn't necessarily bad. What happens then is when money comes in and people's personal opinions come in and discrimination comes in, that's the concern I have. And I think with these people too, if you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. Their goal is to convert people, not to house people, and with the Renus 2 Damn High Coalition, um, our concern is rapid rehousing and housing first. Um, as someone who is a survivor of conversion therapy and has gone to extreme effort to make myself not queer and to make myself as small as possible, by funding these shelters, giving them more space, you might have blood on your hands. And I know that sounds extreme, but I'm being genuine. Um, I would not say that lightly. Um, people need to be housed regardless of who they are. Housing first is the priority. And as someone who, um, grew up with a high opinion of that shelter and has lived in Lansing here my entire life and really had to do some education on my, for myself around this subject, I am deeply, deeply concerned as a person of faith and a resident of Lansing of what organizations that have religion tied into housing, how that could affect not only the individual members, but the community itself. Um, we know that Elliot Larson Act, it was expanded to include gender and sexuality, and when we look at... we look at funding in the city, you know, having that separation of church and state that is deeply, deeply concerning to me and could be a liability to the city, among other significant issues. So I encourage you to consider this issue with prayer and trembling and seriously consider what you could be, how you're casting your votes could seriously impact lives. My information is on the sign-in sheet. I'll be speaking again at the end about how conversion therapy could impact individual residents, and I'm happy to sit down with any of you, regardless of political affiliation, religious, whatever, to see how that is so harmful. I know for myself, I can't speak to, I can speak to an allegation, nothing specific, because I don't want to do libel or whatever, but I have heard stories of people who have been sent to conversion therapy from these ministries, and that is so terrifying. Like, that's not a good thing, so I'll be speaking at the end as well. But thank you so much for your time, and I really hope that you take this feedback. And again, my contact information is there, talk to me afterwards, but this is not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last speaker of this section, David Ellis.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown resident, and I'm here to talk on items nineteen and twenty-two. I'd like to start off as objectively as I can, speaking on item twenty-two. I'm basically going through, repeating things I've said at previous meetings. The residential adaptive reuse zone is a zone created specifically for former institutional buildings being reused in an area. It even goes into detail on the heights being between fifteen and thirty feet. In every single sense of the word, this property does fit into the requirements to be a residential adaptive reuse zone. So I do not see any reason why the zoning itself would be disapproved. That said, for the special land use permit and actually allowing this entire project to go forwards, I would like to avoid commenting too much, as I don't know all the details, but clearly there does seem to be quite a bit of very valid concerns with the organization behind this. Obviously, helping homeless people is in all of our best interests. That being said, we have to actually make sure we are doing what is best for them and not potentially, I don't want to say lazily, but letting someone else take care of an issue that has always been an issue of the city and not of just any community member who wants to help regardless of if they're able to or not, such as an organization with issues. That's all I have to comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are next to the consent agenda.
Vice President Garzen.
Thank you, Council President. So under the consent agenda, current remaining items, we have a tribute in memory of Robert E. Creal, Jr., recognition of nonprofit status citizens for prison reform, liquor license, raft, show, vineyard, Inc., request for off-premise tasting room and a Sunday sales PM at twenty-ten East Michigan Avenue. We have fireworks display license, Ace Pyro LLC, for the City of Lansing Silverbells Celebration. We have a grant exception, Section two-one-nine federal funding for the combined sewer overflow downtown. That's Washington Square and Ottawa Street Project. We have a donation acceptance, Lansing Police Department Special Tactics and Rescue Team. And lastly, we have a donation acceptance for Lansing Police Department Firing Range Unit.
Okay. We have a motion on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay. We're next to resolution for action, and the first one, the grant acceptance for OS reentry program, contract bonus for the Office of Financial Empowerment from Department of Corrections for Job Placement and Retention Performance.
And I pass the gamble.
With that, I would like to call a vote.
I've got to tell you.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
That's okay. The first we have is the reentry grant. We have passed this before. This grant is given as part of the services to the people on patrol and other eligibility populations returning into the community. And what this is, is a bonus that's given back to the city by meeting the requirements. The majority of this, then, is turned over to PECOM, and so with that, I would move the acceptance of the grant.
Okay. With that, I'd like to take a vote on the grant acceptance. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on.
Okay. The next grant is the acceptance of a grant from Jackson National Life. Jackson National Life approached the Department of Financial Empowerment, and this would be a grant for fifteen thousand dollars. This will help them as they start their phase-out, phase-in of the new programs that they'll be offering at the Office of Empowerment. This pays for a part-time temporary consultant that will help engage the community. Jackson National Life actually came to them. It was not something that they had, that they were seeking out, and it's a one-time grant of fifteen thousand dollars. So with that, I would move the acceptance of the grant.
Okay. With that, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're to the grant acceptance, Financial Empowerment Center, Jackson National Life Grant.
We did that one.
Oh, did that one? Oh, right. Then we're on to orders to make, save, or demolish to the owners of fourteen-oh-two Marquette Street.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So the owner in this case is Domingo Gomez, the SEV, which is essentially the threshold that the estimated cost of repairs have to reach in order for a certain property to actually qualify for the make, save, or demolish program. Estimated, I'm sorry, the SEV is thirty-six thousand, and the estimated cost of repairs are nearly twice that, at sixty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This is a fire-damaged property, so if the resolution is approved, this will be a thirty-day make, save, or demolish. No permits have yet to be pulled. We did have a show cause hearing September eleventh. We followed up in public safety on the nineteenth. No changes were articulated at that time. We still have not heard that there have been any changes, and so with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
All right. So this resolution is for orders to make, save, or demolish to the owners of sixteen-sixteen Glen Rose Avenue. The owner in this case is Clarence Hassel. The SEV is twenty-six thousand three hundred, and estimated cost of repairs was set at forty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-five. Again, this is a fire-damaged property, so this would be, if approved by this body, a thirty-day make, save, or demolish. No permits have been applied for at this time. We did vet this again September eleventh as part of a show cause hearing, took it back to public safety on September nineteenth, and since then, we have not heard that any movement has been made. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
All right. So we have another order to make, save, or demolish. This is for the owners of five-zero-one-six Connors Avenue. The owners in this case are Sonia Ford Anthony and Ronnie Ford. The SEV in this case is fifty-eight thousand nine hundred, and the estimated cost of repairs is nearly double that, at one hundred thousand three hundred and three dollars. Again, a fire-damaged property. This was actually a fire damage December of two thousand and nineteen. To this, or I should say, to date, no permits have been pulled. There was some discussion about the home, or I should say, the homeowner being in litigation with the insurer. That has wrapped, a case I believe settled in March of two thousand and twenty-three, so some folks are up to date on this and aware. This was, let's see, again, we had a show cause hearing September eleventh. This was discussed in public safety September nineteenth. We did have the owners in. We had actually the owners in, which is not necessarily typical for all of these properties. And so we did let them know what the process was, even after today, and what they still, I should say, opportunities that were still at their disposal to essentially halt the process. But in any event, as it pertains to this particular body, there's nothing for us to consider because no permits have been pulled and nothing has really been, nothing has really changed, I should say. So with that, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So the last make, save, or demolish that we have, this is for thirty-three-zero-one Turner Street. The initial owners, in terms of our reports, they were listed as David and Kimberly Hallett. We did receive a call from Mr. Hallett, who stated he had sold this property. We did confirm with assessing, this property was sold on July twenty-fifth of this year to Millie Jo Kovik. The, Mr. Hallett had said that the new owner was pulling permits. However, this was not confirmed with building safety nor with code compliance. One of the things that we discussed in committee is that these types of issues run with the property and not necessarily the property owner. So should we move forward, there could potentially be some clawback with regards to the buyer, but that would be a civil issue between the seller and the buyer. With that, the SEV with regard to this property is forty-four thousand. Estimated cost of repairs is a hundred and four thousand and eighty-eight dollars. This is another fire-damaged property, so this would be a thirty-day if approved. As with the other properties, no permits have been pulled and no work has been done. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. We are going out of order and moving to our ordinances at this time.
And then we'll come back to the reports?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we are to ordinance for passage, which I'll read into the record. An ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, provide for rezoning a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of district maps adopted by Section one-two-four-two-point-oh-two of the Code Ordinances. Z eight, twenty-twenty-three, four-one-five, and four-two-one, West Kalamazoo Street, rezoning from DT three, Urban Core, to R-A-R, residential adaptive reuse. It's read by the second time by its title. The ordinance reported from the Committee of Development Planning is on order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Spitzler.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have before us is the final approval for the rezone of four fifteen and four twenty-one West Kalamazoo Street, rezoning it from DT dash three, Urban Core, to R dash AR, residential adaptive reuse district. So on August first, twenty-twenty-three, the planning board voted to, five to one, to recommend approval of the zoning, of both the zoning and the special land use, but we're specifically talking about the zoning right now. And this is a request by the city rescue mission to rezone the properties for, to utilize the property for sheltered care facility for approximately three hundred, three hundred and fifty men and women. They also have a shelter on twenty-two-sixteen South Cedar Street that will be used solely for women with children. And at this time, the existing men's shelter at six-oh-seven East Michigan Avenue will be used for kitchen to provide meals for the homeless. Total, the shelter capacity for the rescue mission will increase from approximately two hundred to four hundred to four hundred and fifty. Staff, well, let's go back. The special land use permit, which we'll be talking about after this, is to allow the use of the properties at four fifteen to four twenty-one for a sheltered care facility. A sheltered care facility is permitted by special land use under, within the R dash AR zoning district, but is not permitted under the current DT dash three zoning of the properties. The staff have recommended to approve both requests. So we also had a public meeting on this. We've had public comment and written comment from the apartments surrounding the proposed location and concerning, with concerns. We've also heard a number of concerns from folks regarding the practice of the city rescue One of the concerns or one of the questions was, are they in violation of the City of Lansing's Human Rights Ordinance? And so we asked our city attorney that, and we were told that, in fact, there is an exception to the Human Rights Ordinance that states it is permissible for a religious organization or institution to restrict employment opportunities, housing facilities, or accommodations that are operated as a direct part of religious activities to persons who are members of or who conform to moral tenants of that religious institutional organization. And because the city rescue mission is a five-oh-one-C-three Christian organization and therefore may restrict their employment or volunteer opportunities in the way outlined in their doctrinal statement. We also talked directly to the members of the city rescue mission because the concerns were, the concerns expressed to us were concerning to us as well as whether or not they do turn folks away. And we were, we were told that they do not, in fact, turn anyone away, but they may, in fact, through their employment, have conditions. I think that the, I think that the concerns you raise are valid, and hopefully we can work with the administration to find an accommodation where folks that are transgendered have a safe place to shelter. The other issue that we had, that we had asked, was whether or not, whether or not the SLU condition could be a condition, whether or not the SLU condition could be tied to a specific applicant or user. In other words, if they decided to leave, could the facility, could the special land use designation at that site be removed? And so we were told by the city attorney, again, that the conditions must be reasonable and tied to a use, not a user. And while a reasonable condition related to a specific user is conceivable, in this instance, it would be inappropriate to apply a specific condition, whereas if this place moved, that special land use would move with that facility. And so those were two concerns as well. We cannot, we cannot base whether or not the, whether or not our approval of the zoning or special land use on anything other than what the law says. The law does not provide for the concerns that have been expressed today. And so we are, we are unable to take those into consideration. We have to go by what the law says. And the law provides for, and based on the recommendations from our plan and zoning, the law provides for the rezoning of this, of this, these two properties for, to AR residential use. And with that, I will move the resolution.
You're moving the ordinance.
I am moving the ordinance, yes. Thank you.
On the ordinance, is there any comments at this time? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just generally, it's a tough decision for various reasons, not to specify on the record, but in an unrelated reason, it's hard for me to, you know, support an organization that does great work, and I was so excited to hear about this in the fourth ward, my ward. Very proud of that because, you know, there's such a need, and I know that as a public defender, half of my clients use the shelters for the most part. So I know there's a need, and I'm trying to decide about the special land use. And then again, unrelated reasons to my decision, I think about that it openly discriminates against a protected class of people that we in Lansing and in Michigan have determined is a protected class. So I'm almost like, okay, well, let... So I'm almost like, okay, well, let's switch out trans and put in African-American or anything. And then how would that even be acceptable as a conversation when it's written on there? So I can understand having a policy, but then to put it in writing makes it more powerful. And it's number four that I asked be stricken. I haven't seen any emails about that. And it could just say, you know, don't engage in sin, but it just goes on and is just really offensive. So I don't know, you know, where my decision's gonna be. Actually, I kind of do, but I don't know what reasons I'm gonna apply towards them. And I just don't know how it's like part of city business when that's literally on there. And then we heard firsthand, firsthand that not everybody is accepted and definitely does not feel safe if they are. That's firsthand. And think about the courage to come here and talk about that, to not only be a trans person, but to be in the shelters and then to have to come and talk about this stuff. So I believe that they either weren't accepted or don't feel safe, and that's unfortunate. Now, as far as the special land use, I'll just listen to other comments. Thank you.
Again, for, for the council's edification, we are only right now voting on the ordinance. And we do have Mr. Chris here. You can go to the podium.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize to Jen. If that was your experience, that's not acceptable. And Jen, I am sorry for that. We do our best to accommodate everybody. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago, we had a transgender stay at a women's and children's shelter. And so you say, Mr. Jackson, that you, you hear experience, but you don't hear the two thousand people that stay at the mission every single year. We serve over two thousand unique people on an annual basis without any city funding, no state funding, no federal funding. We show the love of Christ. That's our number one goal, is to show love of Christ. I can't speak to your specific experience, Jen, but I am sorry for that. I will tell you, we do house transgender people. We don't ask about gender identity or sexual orientation. We just help people. That's always been our goal for a hundred and twelve years, and that's, we've been successful at doing that. So you talk about experience, but you're not talking to two thousand people that are gonna spend the night with us this year either. And so two weeks ago, we had a transgender guest stay with us. We have an average of two people a year that stay with us. So to say transgender's don't stay with us is not appropriate. I can't speak to that incident. I already apologized to you. We try to break policies to help meet people's needs where they're at. And so our goal is to keep people safe. I just wanted to make sure I spoke to that.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes.
I, I just, I, I, I mean, I, this is not, I find this, while I support, and you know I do, the fact that he's speaking at this point is inappropriate. It was during public comment that you were supposed to make these comments and not now. I just felt, that's my point of order, is that it's inappropriate, it's inappropriate for you to speak today, right now.
Second.
That's my point of order, Madam President.
Just a second. I recognize your point of order. I did say that he could come to the podium, so.
That's fine. I just wanted to.
Not a problem. But please, in the back, we're not getting, Mark, we're not gonna get into a debate back and forth. If you want to quickly make some comments about your rezoning, that's fine, other than that, unless we have a question for you.
Also, the fact that we don't do conversion therapy, that doesn't exist, that we just share the gospel. We don't have a model called conversion therapy. So to say the mission articulates and participates in that is inappropriate. We do share and show love of Christ. We meet needs in our community. We're funded by our community, for our community.
Okay. Thank you. If you'd like to sit down right there in case a council member has a question. With that, are there any other, yes, councilmember?
Thank you, Madam President. So as a Christian, as an African-American female, I, I, my heart breaks for your stories, and I totally believe you. I believe you. I believe your story. But I cannot take those stories into consideration because it's not, it's not part of how we rezone. And so I, I just wanted to tell you that, that I do believe you, I hear you. I just cannot take those, take those stories into consideration as I make a decision to rezone. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Are there any other council comments on this? And this is the rezoning. We are not into the special land use. Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. And, you know, just another point, and I hate to go back, but, you know, I can actually get recognized, thank you. But for an organization that prides on the volunteer work and the amount of, of like people power that it takes to feed all those people, to put all these people up, but then, you know, it's restrictive of the volunteers also, because it literally says on there. So, you know, you need all these people to help, but then there's a population where it's like, but not you. And that's a protected population. And that's all. I just, and I, I get it. I totally get it. And that's, it's fine. It's just that, you know, we separate church and state. That means, you know, I'm not necessarily thinking about some exception to discrimination right now. I'm thinking about everybody. But I'm sorry. May I respond?
Councilmember Jackson. Was that a question to Mr. Chris?
Yeah, I guess my question is, isn't it true that you cannot volunteer based on number four if you are trans or LGBTQ?
No. The only, you can volunteer, serve a meal. We, like you said, we use thousands of volunteers a year throughout the community. We don't ask them to sign a doctrinal statement. If you're a ministry partner, if you're sharing the gospel or teaching, then we do ask you to follow our doctrinal statement that we've followed for a hundred and twelve years. That's our faith, that's our First Amendment right. So if you're a volunteer serving a meal, we do not ask you to sign a doctrinal statement. You can be transgender, you can be queer, you can come help us, serve, meet needs in the community, come alongside us to make that happen.
All right. Thank you.
Answer your question.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Okay. Seeing none, no others, please call.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Cost.
No.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
We have five, five yeses.
Okay. And because it's a zoning, we can't ask for immediate effect. So with that, we are now moving to the special land use. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a special land use designation for four fifteen and four twenty-one West Kalamazoo Street. The special land use would allow the property to be used for a sheltered care facility. I've already spoke about it in the past, and so there's, there's no reason for me to go into more detail, but we needed to rezone it to R dash AR Residential Adaptive Reuse, excuse me, in order for us to then turn around and grant a special land use for the development of this shelter. And with that, I'll move the resolution.
We have the resolution before us. So are there any questions on the resolution? Councilmember Hussein.
Not on the resolution, but on the plan, and I thought this was the appropriate place to ask the question. We had some questions. We actually took them up in committee today. We received an answer from Mr. Mark Chris, but I'd like him to make that part of the public record. During the hearing, there were some questions regarding the Michigan Avenue site and what the plan would be for that moving forward, as well as the current outreach site. And so if Mark Chris could address that, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Chris.
Yeah.
Mark, from what I was told, and Mark, you can expand on it, that the Michigan Avenue site would be used to house your kitchen, because right now, you cook food off-site somewhere else.
So our initial plans is to use our West Saginaw, six oh eight West Saginaw, to off-site kitchen, develop our meals. We provide about a hundred and twenty-five thousand meals a year. Our initial plan is to move that to East Michigan and keep it as a drop-in donation center. So people can drop off donations at that location, we'll not shelter people at that location. Our goal is to provide, receive donations, provide our meals, and then transport those meals to our shelter locations. We recently put it on the market. So if we can get the right price, it's possible we'll move off Michigan Avenue completely.
And then, as it pertains to the outreach?
So outreach, we're planning on merging that into our property on West Kalamazoo Street. It feels more efficient, better for the community to be one location for day shelter and night shelter, so twenty-four-seven would be our capacity.
Any other questions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah, I just, also, because this came up also, is that, and just to reiterate, that they do not receive any funding from the city of Lansing because you proselytize. There are other organizations that have mission or church in their names that probably, that do receive funding from the city of Lansing, but they do not proselytize. You do, and that's why you do not receive funding from the city of Lansing. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Sorry.
Just, just one more. One concern I did hear, and I'd like Mark to speak to, and I don't know if it's an allegation that's unfounded, or if it is true and there's some, some reason behind it, or if there's some protection that's provided that we're unaware of. There's been a lot of discussion about boys that are twelve years old or older that are, you know, part of the intake process over on Cedar Street, and that they are actually separated from their families and sent to the men's center. Could you speak to that?
No. We don't send boys out to the men's shelter, but we may not be allowing a family to come in with older boys. We recently had a boy that was up to thirteen, but depends on the age and maturity of the child and the mother and the care for the child. And so there are times we have boys that are older, but we usually partner organizations like Haven House that specialize in mixed families, and that's very helpful. So we typically refer them to another organization if they have older boys. But they would not stay at the men's shelter. That's.
Okay. And I just want to make sure I heard you right. So you said, you don't turn them away without resources, you refer them. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the special land use, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Is that two or one? Two? Okay. The item does pass.
Okay. We're next to reports from the council committees. First being ad hoc committee on homelessness and solutions.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. We have been, I'm not gonna read all of this, but we thank you for the opportunity to submit the report. All the councils should have it. We have had such a wonderful engagement. I want to thank everybody in the community, constituent holders, individuals, to, you know, discuss homelessness and solutions. And some of the recommendations have been for the, and please excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold here, for the school districts, we have a recommendation that the administration work alongside of HRCS and the Neighborhood Citizen Engagement to seek funding and other partners to assist with the FORT program and consider this a priority when reviewing HRCS grants. Excuse me. We have a recommendation to the administration to work with the continuum of care and other local agencies to evaluate current HMIS efforts and to identify and address any perceived or real deficiencies within the system and respectfully ask to report back to the council. We have recommendations through, for CMH, working with the, in the tri-county with the administration to convene a group of stakeholders to look at a plan to add additional adult foster care homes with support teams to help people with disabilities and mental health, making sure that they're not being unhoused and their needs are being met. Recommendations to the administration to partner with Love Joy Community Services to look at developing integrated service models that assists vulnerable populations from overutilizing hospitalizations and from being incarcerated and/or being prematurely put into nursing homes. Excuse me. To work with the local disability network capital area, advocating to improve access to housing and services for those with disabilities. In addition, a resolution to the legislation and governor regarding funding and related efforts and consideration by HRCS on funding prioritizations, looking, relating to the Renters Bill of Rights Resolution to legislation asking for and demonstrating support for different areas within the package that the constituents have been supportive of within the city of Lansing. Economic development and planning, recommend a real rental, excuse me, recommend that, recommend, requires rental properties must have both a rental license and a complete inspection before occupancy. And the Housing Unbudsman recommends the Housing Unbudsman devise a policy to address the issue of tagged homes, and the Housing Unbudsman providing a written report relating to when someone's house gets tagged, how are we, what is the policy to help make sure that they have support and are not just unhoused at that point. Additional recommendations from law and court is recommending a thorough review of chapter two oh three of the municipal civil infraction in section two ninety-seven fifteen, specialty court options, eviction court, community court, to provide safeguards in addition, provide annually stats on enforcement and penalties for unsafe conditions in home based on the code. So those are the things that we are submitting today.
And we have a motion to accept the report.
Yeah.
And I see Councilmember Spitzley has her hand up.
Yeah.
At our, Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity to just briefly talk about it. I mean, I, I was very proud to be on this committee because I thought it was a great extension to our housing and resident safety ad hoc committee that we had last year. And many of the recommendations that we put forth last year augmented this report, and so we hope that when this report is received by the administration, they recognize that a lot of the recommendations from last year's report are with this report in addition to additional recommendations, and, and that way they understand the importance of them and, and look at them very closely. But you did a very good job, Chair Brown, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
No, I really don't have anything to add, other than it was a pleasure, I think, working with those two as part of that committee. And what an incredible opportunity to have partners throughout the community come in and talk about some of the services and some of the programs that they facilitate. There was even value in just hosting, essentially, a forum for those types of conversations to take place. There was a ton of networking that occurred, a ton of information sharing, and I think folks walked out of there more resourceful and more ready to partner on some of these issues. But I think in, in the wake of, essentially, adoption of this, it becomes our job to make sure that we're consistently, you know, kind of mining both reports, frankly, last year's report and this year's report, and ensuring that periodically, you know, we're making, you know, doing what we can to, to move the dial, whether that be asking for some of the reports we're requesting, or at least updates on such, or, or some of the work that we actually are tasking ourselves with, that somebody has actually taken the lead in doing that work, because we certainly don't want these, these reports to simply collect dust. Okay? Thank you.
Are there any other comments? With that, we have a motion to accept the report. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. We will also ask that council make, staff make sure that this is up on our webpage as well. With that, we are on to the Committee of Public Safety for their update on both the red tag and on the fire warning system.
Sure. So we have a couple of updates. The first, you may recall, back in April, it was actually April third, the Committee of the Whole had a special committee of the whole to kind of investigate, to discuss specifically, exclusively, really, the red tag, what we were calling the crisis at the time. We had a number of things come to our attention with regards to code, with regards to the division, with regards to issues out in the field, particularly the housing conditions that some of our most vulnerable throughout the community were facing, and we thought it was critical enough to, to have a meeting. Based on what was disclosed at that meeting, what was learned from that meeting, we were tasked as a public safety committee to continue the conversation, to continue to bring in stakeholders, to continue to investigate how we got as a city to this place and essentially what the path forward was. We have met a number of We have met a number of times. We have provided this committee with a number of updates. There have been times where we've made significant ground, and then there have been times where not so much, because some of these issues are complex. We did ask a few questions of our economic development and planning partners that we wanted to bring to the committee tonight. And so I'm going to very quickly, and first let me thank Mr. Nicholas Mantri with Economic Development, Economic Development and Planning, sorry, he's the deputy director. He always makes himself incredibly accessible, and I do believe that in earnest he's trying to move these issues along with his team. So with that being said, number one, where are we at with the outside expert and top-down analysis of policies and procedures as well as the fee study? So we talked about both of those. The intent was to put out RFPs for both of those, award those, and then get some real work done. The answer is that this top-down analysis has been delayed. Issues contributing are unforeseen, urgent matters that require immediate attention. Significant staffing shortages, which we'll discuss in a minute, within our team, and the substantial allocation of resources to the ongoing fee study project. These factors have collectively diminished our available bandwidth for the code division analysis. There is still a commitment to getting this done, and prioritization is forthcoming. With regard to the fee study, significant progress has been made. The study is taking more than we had originally anticipated, however. The depth of research required and the extensive data collection process have proven to be time-consuming and arduous. Again, we were, says they wanted to reassure that EDP is dedicated to doing their best to help deliver a well-done and useful fee study, and they are estimating a completion date of twelve thirteen of this year, so December thirteenth of this year. We did ask what the current red tag, neat team and pink tag numbers are. We know that we had asked for a dashboard, they had put together a dashboard, they had actually posted that publicly, and then realized that there were some number, or some issues with their numbers, the way that they were compiling those, the way that they were reporting those. So they pulled that dashboard down, basically told us, and we appreciate the honesty, that they couldn't be certain that the numbers that we were receiving were really ever accurate. So I'm not going to cite necessarily the numbers that we started with, but they are fairly certain that these numbers are the correct numbers this moment in time. So the red tag number is now at five hundred and eighty. The pink tag number is two hundred and thirty-eight. And in terms of the red tags that have been moved into the neat team process, that number is at four hundred and sixty-seven. And it should also be noted that the dashboard has been corrected and is back up on the city's website. I think the last update was actually October first. Number three, now that the code compliance manager position has been filled, what other vacancies do we have within code? And where are we at in the hiring process? The, the respective individuals, these folks that are out doing the work, these positions have to be filled. That has to be prioritized. I know that we are looking at with leadership, bringing in HR and finding out, you know, what the process is, where we're at with certain things, why sometimes there's this extensive turnaround time, but these positions have to be filled. Number one, we have one premise officer position open. The recent posting for this position yielded eighteen candidates, which is fantastic. We are now in the process of scheduling assessment testing. In terms of code officers that are actually out doing rental inspections, we actually now have two vacancies, and we've had two postings. That has produced eight candidates, and EDMP is currently moving forward with testing. So that is, in terms of that front, that is good news. And then we do have, because of a promotion internally, we do have our lead housing inspector that is, is now vacant. And so we have that one lead code officer position has not been posted yet. Their goal is to fill the other three positions first, before moving on to not only posting that, but then testing, interviewing and awarding a position. And then lastly, they did want to let us know that a dedicated code officer is spending a large majority of their time, which is new, focusing on addressing the oldest red tags. As we know, we've had some red tags out there that have been, you know, tagged for some twenty years. Code is currently issuing court ordered compliance tickets to those properties when warranted and moving properties that meet the requirements for demo into the make, save or demolish process. We have initiated a new occupied red tag policy. Upon evidence leading code to believe a red tag home may be occupied, code is now mailing three resource documents, as well as a letter, all of which I will send to Sherry to forward on to the rest of this body. We still notify LPD and we attempt to make contact with those occupying a red tag home to provide the attached resources in any questions, or answer any questions, sorry. They are having weekly staff meetings with their code officers, which provide an opportunity for code staff to seek answers, where they discuss current issues and solutions and aid in promoting teamwork. What we are looking to do is to have code back in, probably toward the end of this month, and maybe an additional time in November. It's, it's our hope that in that last meeting in December, we can provide you with a comprehensive update and hopefully we move the dial on a number of these issues. The second piece is that we actually, you may recall, we had a pretty severe storm rip through the City of Lansing, I believe it was August twenty-fourth. In the week of, in the wake of that, sorry, we ended up having our public service director in, Andrew Co-Patrick. We had our fire chief in, Mr. Brian Sturtevant. We also had Mr. Dick Cuffley, which is the manager over at the Border Water Light. There were, you know, a number of concerns from residents from different parts of the city that were broke that night. And one of the things that we heard was that, you know, some people that were used to hearing warning signing, or warning sirens, sorry, could not hear those sirens. We were kind of schooled, I think, that night on the activation of those sirens, and the fact that they're kind of positioned in zones, that wind speeds help to determine the activation, even the fact that nine-one-one, Ingle County nine-one-one actually kind of operates and facilitates the system, both the activation and the testing. I wasn't aware of that frankly. But in any event, there was a comment during that, that particular presentation that we were in the process of decommissioning sirens. And so where people may have grown accustomed to a siren, as an example, at North School, that, that might actually not serve as a location in the future for a warning siren. And so we asked for an update and additional information. I want to thank Mr. Brian Sturtevant with the Lansing Fire Department. He worked incredibly hard, I think, to get us information, was incredibly accessible, and he did attend our September nineteenth meeting to discuss. You have printed materials in your red folder. It is titled Outdoor Warning Siren Status, if you want to take a quick look at that. It's going to go over kind of some of the highlights that were shared with us at our meeting. First of all, it stated to us that the city actually started developing a plan for replacement of outdoor warning signs back in two thousand and twenty. They had determined that many were old and in disrepair. They cited things like faulty wiring, failing poles and the like. As part of that process, we have actually went from twenty-two sirens to twelve sirens. That's due to enhanced quality and coverage, output of respective sirens, and then also strategic positioning of sirens throughout the city. Mr. Sturtevant said that is part of the process. They did conduct a sound study with a group called Federal Signal, the manufacturer of the sirens. They then embedded and approved the plan. In the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, they began the installation phase. They did partner with the Lansing Border Water Light as well as Consumers Energy, particularly on placement of poles. In the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-two, the old system was taken offline, meaning basically they deactivated it and the new system was activated. Due to funding issues, they said some of the old infrastructure actually remained in place, which is probably part of the reason for some confusion on the part of our constituency, because they're looking up, they're still seeing the physical infrastructure, even though those, that infrastructure had been deactivated. During the current fiscal year, LFD has been decommissioning and removing old sirens. So the power has been unhooked, and we're removing the infrastructure. We have determined, and we are asking for further clarification as to how they determine this, but we went from eighty percent coverage with the old system to about ninety-nine percent coverage with the new system. However, it does say that we maintain sirens within the city. The county maintains the sirens throughout the remainder of the county, but they manage all sirens within the county. So essentially, we fix and maintain, and they test and activate. There were some questions from citizens, why didn't we hear the sirens? The answer was that because they're, because these are meant to be detected when outside and warn those that are outdoors that they need to take shelter. Those that are inside are supposed to be alerted by a number of other pieces, such as radio, TV news, smartphone and the like. What they reference is layers of resiliency were built into the system and no one piece is expected to be a standalone component for alerting people of weather-related issues. Education was referenced many times over. We talked about the dashboard, we talked about the city website. We talked about the communications director communicating with different news outlets. Concerns remained. I think councilwoman Wood, as an example, discussed some of the concerns she often hears from seniors, that they don't have smartphones, that other devices that are used for alert, for alerting, that type of thing, may not be possessed or owned by these individuals. And so he said that he heard us loud and clear, and that they would continue to explore additional layers of resiliency. There were some additional questions from the committee, how many warning signs do we now have that are operable? We have twelve. Inoperable, there are no sirens at this point that are inoperable. We simply have old sirens that are being, or have been decommissioned, they need to be removed. In terms of the coverage study, the study to ensure all residents would be covered was in fact completed. Replacement is complete, working with the LBWL and consumers to decommission old sirens now. There was a question about whether or not we could adjust the audio level of sirens to expand the coverage or to increase the decibel level. I just received an answer back on that today. Mr. Sturtevant did reach out to the manufacturer. They said that the audio levels of the sirens are preset by the vendor, taking into consideration the topography of the land, structure, location, the proper levels, maximum outdoor hearing capacity, and that they cannot be adjusted. The other piece was, we asked if additional sirens could be added. So if we were to, as an example, put out a survey after a Saturday testing, a first Saturday thirteen-hundred hour testing, and there was a, you know, pockets in the city that for whatever reason just could not hear that from their front porch, as an example, could we add additional sirens to the system? We were told that no additional sirens can be added to the system. The most recent upgrades in siren technology allowed for the system to reduce the sirens from twenty-two to twelve. So that was the answer. We did encourage the, the chief to engage in additional surveys. They said that they are exploring that at this time in terms of, you know, what the best practice would be, and they would work to implement that in the near future. And that is, that is the report from public safety.
Are there any questions for councilmember Hussein? Seeing none. We have a motion to receive the report. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes unanimously.
Okay, next we're to speaker registration on public comment on city government-related matters. For anyone who'd like to speak on city government-related matters, you have one minute to speak on the yellow form. If you have not done so, then give it to Evelyn. And with that, then we are to reports of city officer boards and commission communication petitions.
Go ahead.
That's okay, communication and other city-related matters.
Thank you. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes unanimously.
Okay, items from the city clerk, minutes and boards of commission placed on fire in the clerk's office.
Please stand by.
The city council meeting scheduled for two thousand and twenty-four.
Committee of the Whole.
We have items from the mayor, reappointment of DeShawn Leek as third ward member of Border Water Light for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
That Committee of the Whole.
Grant acceptance, state of Michigan, OS re-entry contract.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Special assessment, principal shopping district role.
City Operations and internal auditor.
And then we have the setting the hearing for that special assessment.
Again, City Operations and internal auditor.
Okay, then we have five, one, five traffic control orders.
Those will go to City Operations.
Then we have order make, save or demolish, and they're setting the hearing for seventeen twenty-two Denora Street.
The order and the public hearing go to Public Safety.
Then we, the order make, save or demolish for thirteen, one-three-one Jackson Street, and setting the show cause hearing for that address.
And that again is to Public Safety Committee.
Then we have order make, save, demolish for six-one-nine West Mount Hope Avenue, and setting the show cause hearing for that.
And that will go to Public Safety.
Then we have the Brownfield Plan eighty-four for five-oh-five to five-oh-seven East Chaiwa C Street Rehabilitation Project, and setting the hearing.
Okay, that will go to development and planning. But the problem is that the resolution that we have for setting the public hearing has the wrong property number down. Property number that they have down goes to nine-twenty-three West Saginaw. So if there intends to be action on this, the, our council staff needs a new resolution by October third, by nine AM, so it can be on the development and planning agenda. Otherwise, it will be on the next meeting.
Okay, we're to communication petitions. We have three affidavit disclosures from police officers Anthony Dean, Caitlin Miller and Cigar Kendall.
And those will go to the ethics board.
And we have a notice from Michigan Lit Control Commission for MK Gotra LLC, request for transfer of membership interest at three-eight-one-four West Jolly Road.
And that will go to City Operations.
Okay, next is motion of excuse absence.
Vice President Garza.
I make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Spatter for.
You have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose.
Okay, we're remarks. Remarks by councilmember.
Are there any other councilmember remarks? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor or his executive assistant.
No remarks from the executive assistant.
Okay, then we're to public comment on city government-related matters. Our first speaker is for Ryan Cabell, followed by Farhan.
How y'all doing? So I told myself, I said I was going to come to this beating because I needed clear understanding on how to be a successful black businessman in a city of Lansing. Now, September eighteenth, my cabaret license was revoked. Now, keep in mind, September eighteenth, I prevented, I presented a security plan that I wrote up, that I was going to personally fund out of my pockets, as the same process that I did with Energy Vincent and Logan Square Plaza. So I've read the newspapers, talked to the owners, and I saw the settlement. You took my cabaret license. And the settlement with the owners of Logan Square Plaza was, they're responsible for putting security cameras up and having one licensed security guard in the parking lot. So I'm asking, how do you have, how do you put that responsibility on a tenant and turn right back around and put the responsibility on the owners? Took my cabaret license. You turn around and tell them, you got to put cameras up and one security guard during certain hours. So as a successful businessman, black successful businessman coming to Lansing, Michigan, how does that make sense? I'm out of sixty thousand dollars in a business. Because the finger was pointed at me. The narrative in every single newspaper, on every single news station, was he didn't secure the two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-square-foot parking lot. I've talked to fourteen business owners in this city, and they never, ever heard fifteen-hundred-feet ordinance to where an individual is supposed to secure. So, I want to be successful in this city. I remember asking, am I in a war between Lan, the City of Lansing and the owners of the Logan Square Plaza? Because these same articles that we can Google, they will say, we've had over five-hundred phone calls to Logan Square Plaza. We've had shootings, we've had after-hours, we had illegal drug activity. Before Ryan Cabell filled out that application to become a tenant, before Ryan Cabell applied for his first cabaret license, before Ryan Cabell renewed his cabaret license. So when one incident happened inside those same owner's parking lot, you point the finger at me and say, take his cabaret license. Am I mad? I was sad forty-eight hours after. Right now, I just need some understanding, because the money didn't stop. And my passion for the people did not stop. And my mission for rejuvenating the south side of Lansing and helping the youth and helping the homeless and continuing to be a businessman that pays over thirty-five people, local citizens from Lansing after every event that I do, I'm still here, but I need understanding, because I don't want that swiped away from me at the blink of an eye. an eye. And before my clock, before my time ran out, just FYI, my last event I did was successful. But the day before my last event, the police showed up and talked to the owners and tried to persuade them not to allow me to do my event. Let that sit on y'all.
Thank you. Next is Joanne Galloway, followed by Willie.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Galloway. I'm a newer resident here in Lansing. I live at thirty-one-hundred East Mount Hope Avenue. I work as the...
That was me.
Ooh, now I'll get extra time.
There you go.
I work as the executive director for the Center for Change Northern Michigan Advocacy, and I work virtually with people in northern Michigan every day. One of the things that we as an organization promote is civic engagement. So here I am tonight in my home community, attending my own city council meeting, carrying out what I preach about every day. I do wanna commend you as a city, a city that I have come to love and really enjoy living here. I want to commend you for not funding agencies that profitilize. Sorry, I can't say that word very good. Profitilize. As a white cis woman with privilege, I will be here in this community to support those who do not have that privilege. So thank you. It's a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Willie, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Hello. I live twelve-seventeen Maquette Street. My name is Willie Hobson, and I was just sitting here listening at the people when they first opened up abortion by Mary Everett. I was a little kid down in Mississippi when that man got shot down there in Jackson in the yard. Brought back a whole lot of memories. And then when we sang that flag, I wondered about justice for all. This ain't justice what I got him on the paper. I sent some pictures to me, Wood. I called my city council person. I ain't heard from none of them yet. I need to talk to somebody about what going on with the city and my property. They trying to take my property. They overcharged me for taxes talking about for the last fifteen years. My property was rental property. They know my property wasn't no rental property. They knew I was staying in that property talking about they couldn't pay me no, nothing back for about three years. Where all that money that they, that I paid in more than three years? I, I got behind on my taxes. Now all the state, they want, they gave me a fine and tell me that I gotta come up with three thousand and some odd dollars. If I don't, they're gonna go up five hundred dollars each, for each addition date. How can I come up with that kind of money? I couldn't even keep up with my taxes. What, what, what's wrong? Is something wrong with this system? It ain't no justice like that. I took some pictures of that cow down there, wrapped from down the street from my house for, for the last ten days. I wanna find out, they cold compliant, get them people a letter, then go back in their backyard and picked up a couple pieces, and then say, well, we're gonna find you that. That's what I wanna figure out. So, I got some, uh, stuff here. Anybody wanna need to see it? These pictures that I took, about all these countrymen been sitting around people houses, but they ain't did nothing about that. The wood, do you still have your stuff? All the good stuff they took, took out of my yard? How about that? It was junk.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. I will give you a call tomorrow, see if we can't work it out.
Thank you, ma'am. I sure appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
God bless you, ma'am. All right, I'll keep a good workup.
All right, our next speaker is Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Nate Ford.
Good morning. No, good evening, sorry. I'm tripping.
That's okay.
Farhan, you know, tonight was very heartbreaking. You know, we have, we have a population who experiences the highest level of violence in the shelters. And tonight, you guys heard firsthand stories of what takes place inside those shelters, and you guys sat there and said, while we do believe your stories, while I hear you, I see you, and what you're saying is very credible, that's not good enough. That harm that happened to you, I can't take that into consideration. And so, I'm just confused. Lansing residents have only two options. A, to live in red-tagged properties, or B, to live in shelters that discriminate and that harm people. That's the only solution that you guys are offering in this city. You guys have not asked the, the man that came here without permission, Carol Wood, I respect you, ma'am. You are someone who follows the rules, and tonight, I've never seen you allow somebody to just come up and speak without permission. And so, I thought that was out of pocket. If he got that kind of chance, we should have all been given a chance to speak. But the most important thing is, you guys should have asked this individual, what would rebuilding trust, repairing harm, and true inclusion look like? That's the most important question, without giving him that zoning permission. People are getting harmed in this city, literally. You guys sit here and act like nothing is happening, and that everything is fine. Some people would rather sleep in the streets in that cold weather than to live in a shelter where they're being told what to do, who to worship, what to listen to. And that's not how this country operates. It's very shameful. And so, homelessness knows no religion. And those who step forward to serve our unhoused residents should do so out of a sense of service and compassion. There should be no strings attached, period. There are plenty of terrific organizations doing great work who don't discriminate, who don't discriminate against employees or volunteers because of who they love. Those are the kind of organizations we should be promoting. Those are the kind of organizations we should be giving funding to, not the ones that wanna harm people. So, we, we just gotta do better. This is the capital city of the state of Michigan. And the two, the only two options that people have in the city, like I said, live in a red-tagged property and pay high rent, or live in a shelter where you are being discriminated against you. We just gotta do better.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nate Ford, followed by Nathan Hallman.
Hello. My name's Nate Ford. I live in Lansing. I'm part of the Lansing Enthiogens and Psychedelic Society. Our mission is to cultivate safe spaces for people to share their experiences, connect, and gain knowledge of entheogens and psychedelics in order to heal and progress as human beings. We'd like city council to consider adopting the same language that Ann Arbor, Detroit, Hazel Park, and Ferndale have already adopted to decriminalize mushrooms in the city of Lansing, to help vets, to help people with mental health issues, to help people in physical and spiritual and mental health pain. I apologize.
That's okay.
En- entheogenic plants and fungi have been used by many cultures around the world for thousands of years for spiritual practice, health, and general self-betterment. There's an abundance of research showing efficacy of these substances when used to treat a wide variety of mental and physical health conditions. These substances are non-addictive and have very little risk associated with them. People have also, people also have an unalienable right to cognitive liberty. We are sovereign beings with an inherent right to nature. It's time to stop treating people as criminals for seeking to improve their lives in a way that does not harm anyone. We'd like you to also consider the bill SV four-nine-nine that's calling for the decriminalization of mushrooms across the entire state of Michigan. The, the proposed bill adds amendments to the Michigan Controlled Substances Act that would effectively remove penalties for personal and communal use of entheogens, defined as naturally occurring plants, fungi, and other natural sources containing tryptamines, phenylphthalamines, and endolamines, and/or any preparation or mixture thereof. While the proposed bill will not protect sale of these substances, it does protect the right to collect a reasonable fee for counseling, spiritual guidance, or related services provided in conjunction with the use of entheogenic plants and fungi. We'd also like to invite all of the city council members to our next meeting. Our next leaps meeting is at thirteen-hundred Eureka Street, October eighteenth, from seven p.m. till eight-thirty p.m. You can come and see for yourselves. There's men and women that are getting help from these substances, and we'd like you to consider adopting the same language that's already been adopted in Detroit, Hazel Park, Ferndale, and Ann Arbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nathan Hallman, followed by Jim Thompson.
Hi, I'm Nathan Hallman. I'm here to talk about the, the issue of not having a homeless shelter in Lansing that allows LGBT people. And to be honest, I don't know as much about this issue as some of the other people have spoke, but I feel like I've learned a lot on it the past couple of days that have been concerning. I know that I've let probably four or five people stay in my house who were homeless the past few years, and of those four or five people, four of them were trans. I know that a lot of my friends are, my trans friends are just terrified of homelessness. They're terrified of facing discrimination from landlords. They're terrified that they're just one bad paycheck, one bad day away from being homeless, and what that would mean. And I also just found some of the stuff in this meeting kind of concerning. I thought it was just odd that when we asked, you know, if, whether or not city rescue turns away trans and LGBT people, we, we asked the people who are running the mission if they do, and like, I would wanna ask the actual people who are experiencing the issue. It just seems odd to only ask the one side and not the other. I thought it was really odd that Mr. Chris called them a transgender. They're not an animal. They're a person. It's a transgender person. And finally, I just, I found it odd that they have an explicit policy on their website that took me about a minute to find that said that they explicitly don't let LGBT and trans people work or volunteer there. They said, "God has commanded us to refrain from any intimate sexual activity outside marriage. Any board member, staff member, or volunteer in the mission, conformed to be involved in sexual sin, including molestation, homosexuality, lesbianism, bisexuality, bestiality, insects, pornography, adultery, and/or transsexualism, will be immediately removed for any positions of ministry or service by the executive director or board of directors." So, yeah, that's how they feel about people that work there and volunteer there. I just haven't, find it really hard to believe that they would be so willing and open to house people there. And, yeah, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, our next speaker is Jim Thompson, followed by Kelsey Brienne.
Okay, I didn't realize it was the tradition to state your address and stuff. I will not be doing that for my own safety. I know there are definitely people out there that are against me existing as a human being, would like to unalive me because of who I am, so I just wanna like state that. I'm most concerned about queer and trans youth in this community. So, what's this dude? He took me out over there to like talk to me about what they're doing, and he said they're learning. He said they have a room, one room with one bed for the transes, right? I guarantee you, there is more than one homeless trans person in this community, and they're sleeping on, they're sleeping in the streets, they're sleeping in my house, they're sleeping in Luna's house. Like, like, we are caring for our own people because there is no safe place for us to go. And, you know, the, the Lansing Rescue Mission aside, I have seen people at Holy Cross be forced to throw all their clothes away and their, their hair in order to be given a bed, and being called a man. Dude called me a man out there, okay? Like, we need to have a solution as a community for a place that doesn't discriminate against anyone. We need to do that as a community. Y'all need to have a homeless shelter for our people, for not just like my people, not just like trans people, not just gay and lesbian people, all people. 'Cause the plate, the people that are doing this now do not support that. We have, it's, so the, the Center for American Progress says that twenty-five to fifty percent of homeless youth in this country are LGBTQ. Fifty percent of all teens get a negative reaction when they come out to their parents. One in four teens are forced to leave their homes after coming out to their families, and sixty-eight percent of teens have experienced family rejection after coming out. We are in crisis here as a people, and we have to recognize that like, like everyone's been saying, we, like, the state has updated the civil rights law. We will, we have people already coming here. We have trans refugees coming here from Florida and Tennessee. I have friends who are housing children because their parents are afraid, 'cause they can't get their own, their healthcare in Florida and Tennessee. They're sending their children here alone to live with, you know, like, my friend, her, her like kid met this other kid on the internet, and like, you have a discord together, and like, the mom is like, it's safer to send my kid to hang, to like live with their internet friend, because they're not gonna be able to get their healthcare anywhere else. People are coming here because the state has, has said that this is a safe place for them. But Lansing is not a safe place for them. And we need to change that as a community of people, 'cause I know that y'all have different values than that, than this piece of shit over here. We have different values. I know that y'all have different values. And so, like, let's do something about that, please.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kelsey Brienne, followed by Luna Brown.
Hi, I'm already crying, so it's gonna be great. Yeah, I appreciate y'all being here. I'm just like really concerned about Mark's crisp behavior tonight. But also, I do think that it would be good to have a citywide ban on conversion therapy. There already is a statewide ban on conversion therapy for minors, but I think it'd be great if in the city of Lansing there was a ban. So I don't know how that would work logistically with everything, but that would be a good first step. As someone who is a survivor of conversion therapy, is someone that, coming out process is very difficult due to religious parents and just support network, Lansing has been a safe place for me, but that's 'cause I have connections. I know people, and I've been here, Lansing area my entire life. I cannot imagine what it'd be like for someone who traveled to Lansing because of housing and security, or were living in the street and they didn't have those connections. Found families, chosen family is absolutely a thing, right? That's a lot of LGBTQ people, we survive and because of our chosen community, right? But I think when it comes to LGBT inclusion, and it comes to inclusion for black and brown people, and all, we're thinking about all like the protected class, right, with under Elliot Larson, and just in general, we need to be having these conversations so that when these things come to the floor, it's like understood ahead of time. And I, working with the Renessee High Coalition and my organization for a future Michigan, again, I would love to facilitate conversations. again, I would love to facilitate conversations. If not with me, there's plenty of advocates who are here or are not in the room who would love to be able to have a seat at the table and talk about these things. Because when you look at the, in this very specific example, right, and the doctrinal statement and all of that, there's no way that that doesn't like affect how you treat people. I don't think there's a way to like separate that, right? I don't think there's a way that like, okay, we believe these things, we treat these people, like, there's, that has to bleed through, right? And so how do we create legislation? How do we create like citywide ordinances or whatnot so that can't happen? And it's complicated, right? Because it's a five oh one C three, it's separate, it's religious, whatever. I would love to see us actually create concrete, like, stuff in writing policy for the city of Lansing. Because things like this shouldn't be able to slip through on exceptions or on policy or whatnot. I would love to see us have more of a, yeah, because as someone who, I wasn't able to come out until thirty-two, or, yeah, thirty-one. And we tend to think of these bigotries and these beliefs as dying out with the generation of people getting older, but that's not true, these prejudices are continuing. So, thank you for your time. Again, my information's on there, so I would love to meet with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Luna Brown, followed by Stan Shuck.
I'll try not to repeat what's already been said, but I found it kind of astounding that you let Mark Chris just come up here and speak instead of making him go through the public comment section like the rest does have to do, especially when he straight-up lied on a few issues such as volunteers being allowed to be LGBT. He also stated that transgender people do stay at the City Rescue Mission, and there's one transgender at this women's shelter right now. I can guarantee you that transgender is a transgender man and not a transgender woman. I know this because I've had friends who stayed at the City Rescue Mission and has been forced to stay in the place determined by their assigned birth sex and not their gender, and they were roomed with another woman. So, yeah. On top of this, I still don't understand why the city doesn't put any funding into funding their own shelter or something similar, not even emergency shelters for during like horrible weather like we had last winter. You know, it honestly saves cities money when they invest in homelessness and invest in shelters for the homeless. You know, the cost of emergency care goes down, cost associated with nonviolent crimes goes down, and I find it pretty astounding that you guys are putting six million dollars into renovating a pool when that money could be going towards opening a shelter to actually help people. You know, so, I don't know. It's just really frustrating what we've experienced here tonight, and, I don't know, it feels like, you know, like, you say you've heard our voices and stuff, but we need to see action to actually prove that. Only voted, two of you voted against the rezoning. And again, I do agree, we need more space in shelters, there's a lack of rooms available, but we need a place for everyone. We can't just keep funding this one shelter in this city, you know, and have that be our only option. We need a public option for the people of this city so that we know we can actually be safe. It took me years to come out of the closet and finally, like, actually dress in the way that I choose. And by the time I chose, like, I had been in and out of psych hospitals for an entire two-year period, and I was on the verge of killing myself because of who I am and my inability to express that and be who I am. And even though I still fear for my life regularly because of who I am, I will take that over being in the closet any day, and I will, if, I will not go back in the closet to get shelter.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Stan Shuck, followed by Robert Gray.
Good evening, Stan Shuck, South Lansing. I'd like to touch real quick on the sirens and communication and emergencies. The power's out, you're not going to get any of that stuff in your house, Adam. Power's out, it was out all over town, you're not going to have TV, you're not going to have radio, you may not have Wi-Fi, so that seems a little ludicrous. I guess we'll find out next Saturday. We can all step outside and see what we can hear. And I'd also like to say, keep getting calls about people wanting to know what the general revision is, and people need to understand what that is. But this is our opportunity to get rid of the strong mayor process and get a city manager in here that does things that make fiscal sense and not just for a political agenda. And I also want to say, I want to touch on that, on that com posting. This week I called down to O and M, it's fall officially, asked if they were picking up weekly, and the gal there said, she volunteered, they said, "No, it's still bi-weekly, and it looks like it's going to stay that way for the rest of the season." She didn't just make that up, that came down the light, the ladder from somewhere. So that wasn't just something made up. And I want to say that that fund, you know, like I said, the man came down here and admitted everything. He said that they're not buying the trucks, the current truck is twenty-one years old, but the fund pays for two new trucks every two years. The oldest a truck could ever be would be six years old. One is twenty-one years old. They're three hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. Do the math. Where is all that money? Twenty-one years and no new trucks, when the fund pays for two new trucks every two years. Do the math. This year, we hired no seasonals. You came to us, you raised the price, you said you're going to hire these people, the website says four trucks, four people doing the work. You go to the city's website for that job, it says fourteen dollars an hour. It doesn't mention the twenty-two dollars an hour that you get while you're doing the job, or the thirty-three dollars an hour that you get while you're on overtime, or that those positions make between forty and fifty thousand dollars a year for the few months that they do work because of the overtime. And those jobs would be filled. These vacancies are orchestrated. This whole thing is orchestrated. Where is the money? The fee needs to be reevaluated against the cost. What did you spend on it? And then break that down to the property owners. And that's the fee. It's a fee for services yet to be rendered, for things that we're yet to get. You said we're going to give you all of this for this money, and you didn't give us any of it. You're not cleaning the streets, you're not doing the catch patients, you don't have the employees, you're not buying the trucks, you're not doing the education, you're not doing any of it. It's fraud.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Gray, followed by Mike Carl.
My name is Robert Gray. I live on the south side of Lansing, and I haven't been down here for a long time. The only thing that's me, I got shorter and older. I am down here to, in regards to an email that I sent to Ms. Woods about the roads, in particular, the one is America Road, over on the east, or the south side there. This was the answer that was received from Andrew Kilpatrick to Carol, who related to me. And this is what this gentleman said. This, the section from Cedar to Amwood has been designed and is awaiting funding for twenty-some years. It will be a full reconstruction because the road when built was not designed for the traffic it now carries, which is mostly semis. That's all businesses over there. Shaheen's, Sam's is there, Menards is there, Target's there, and they use Sam's parking lot to park semis. So, I agree, oh, excuse me, uh, yeah, the base material below the asphalt, or is below. I agree this block is in terrible shape, and he's talking about between Cedar Street and Amwood, which is in front of Bob Evans. And now, he says, "We may be able to overlay this with our crews of season if we get through all the streets currently on the list, but this would buy a couple of years, only a couple of years, before it begins falling apart again." Now, isn't that brilliant? Really? Common sense. When they built the damn thing, there wasn't a house over there. That's all, all businesses. Isn't it? And everybody agrees? I even talked to Shaheen's, I thought, well, maybe you could do something, Bob, but no. But anyhow, I only got a few seconds left. This is what we have. Lotto for education and roads. Sales tax forty-nine to sixty-nine, or for education roads, it went for four, sales tax four percent to six percent. Casino gambling, education roads. Gas tax, vehicle registration, roads. Legalize weed, education roads. Now the government wants to raise the taxes some more for gas. And then the mayor charges me another two hundred and some dollars for a facility for police that we don't even have. And you know, Carol, I've talked to you about that, that we don't have no protection over there on that south side. I got a sergeant that come out and he talked to me. What can we do for you? Patrol the roads. Shootings, car thieves, everything that's going on over there, and we don't have no cops. None. I understand we're short, but we're going to build a hundred or seven hundred dollar, whatever that thing is.
Yep. Thank you.
It's crazy.
Next speaker is Michael Carl, followed by Linda Carl.
Mike Carl, who's an advocate. I'm really disappointed today, super disappointed. I want to show you a couple of things because I always bring receipts. One thing is a demerit from the, the City Rescue Mission from the thirtieth of this month, the thirtieth of this month, and you guys can have this after this. I want you to notice on their demerit system how they don't practice religion, enforce religion. Notice one of the demerits on here is you have to go to church. If you don't, you get kicked out. Another one is down here, under employment, employability, employability they call it. You have to join the work crew, which is usually cleaning communal areas in the shelter. I want to point out that none of it, nobody gets paid, but you can also get a demerit if you don't do it. Down here on the list, I want to point out what human trafficking is. It's called forced labor. This has been happening in our shelter system for years. I have stood up and talked about the twelve-year-old boys, I have stood up and talked about how we need to stop these rules. I think the City Rescue Mission does great stuff, but I'm glad that Mark Chris came and showed himself. Because when I go to these meetings, that's the Mark Chris I see. This special privilege. I'm disappointed, disappointed. Every single time I stand up, do I have to invest in another hotel just so that we can have a real shelter system? Every time I would have six members in a hotel room, I would have the city knocking at my door. This is the whole, this is the room that three families stayed in at the City Rescue Mission. Three families, seven people, smaller than a hotel room at the Berkwood Inn. But the city tried to shut me down. The mother that sent this, she was kicked out today with her three small children. I wish that Mark Chris was still here. I got ahold of CPS, of course, my mom, who's a miracle worker, was able to get CPS to pay for a hotel room, which costs us more taxpayer money. But no support, no support. And here we are, allowing Mini David Koresh to open up downtown and allow him to push his agenda even more. This just, it irritates me. Every day I have to stand up for the same thing. Boys sent to the adult shelter in a communal shower at Holy Cross. Kids that are left outside with their parents because they're afraid that they're going to get separated. And here we are with families in very few family shelters. The Homeless Bill of Rights is in the House of Representatives right now. I want you to read the bottom of that bill, because all these people that stood up and said that they had a problem can now use civil penalties on anyone that they told as soon as it's passed into law. That includes Mark Chris and everyone else in city government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Carl, with the, then last speaker is Jerry Norris.
My name's Linda Carl, and I'm Mike's mom. I live in Eaton Rapids, and though I've been told people that don't live and pay taxes in the city of Lansing have no say, I spend more time in Lansing, helping the people of Lansing than I spend in my own town. But I'm concerned about this with the boys. Because of the fact he said, the very words he said was, "Oh no, we don't take boys twelve years old." And he says, "Well, when they're a little older, we try to get them in a Haven House. That place is always full." So then what happens to them? I'll tell you, there's a woman now that has a twelve-year-old boy in her car because of these rules. Did you know that the Rescue Mission is the only place that CSCs can go? I don't care if a boy is twelve, I don't care if he's fifteen, I don't care if he's eighteen. They take communal showers. Would you want your child there? I wouldn't. Has anybody even talked about that? Talk about unsafe. That's unsafe, because they go in unaware, all of them. They go in unaware. What, what do we do here? I think that it's sad that there's so many people. What about beach shelters? You know, I hear, "Oh, people can't take, oh, Lansing's got all..." Well, you come to Eaton Rapids, the bus goes down one main road, that's it. We got a hotel that whole service is ten, that's it. So where are you going to put them? No services, no nothing. They're all here. Maybe if we managed our things better, that it would be okay. This isn't okay with the kids. It's not okay. It's just not okay. Has anybody asked him about that? Or did you even know? It's upsetting to know that children can be wrecked or stalked. What happens with them if they have to go to school? Does anybody make sure they're there? I think we really, I was appalled that an ordinance takes precedent over what, the safety of people, and I mean anybody. That shouldn't be right. And we hear plenty of the conversion stories. We hear plenty of the transgender stories. We have people that have stayed with us that are gay that said, "Did you know, in order to stay there, they want us to take the conversion, whatever it's called?" It's ridiculous. But please, for the kids, the boys, that are staying in that place, please consider who is in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Jerry Norris.
Jerry Norris with the fledge. I will, two subjects real quick. Mr. Ford here said thirteen hundred Eureka, I think he didn't want to pull the fledge's name into the psychedelics conversation, but I want to stand here right now and say I completely support what they say, that's why we host them. My biggest regret that I have probably in my life is that, you know, if I could go back seven years from now, I would have been microdosing my daughter with psychedelics, and I do not believe she would have died of that fentanyl overdose. This is a serious issue, it's a health issue, it's not a, let's do drugs type of issue, it's super serious. It's time to end this war on drugs, which is really a war on all of us, so I completely support what he said. Now, I also support whatever, I'm really here- Now, I also support whatever, I'm really here to talk about shelters. I support what everybody said about the mission, and I don't think we need to beat that dead horse right now. But I'd like to point out a couple of things that Mark was saying, that he doesn't turn people away. And I would argue with that in that we celebrated our diversity in a couple of different ways at the beginning of this meeting. We have had all types of people up here tonight of different ages, of different colors, of different, you know, being straight, being queer, being whatever they want to be, and we celebrate our diversity. And we need to remember that we didn't just say zap, we're diverse, we're a diverse city. We included people. But it's more than that, too. We didn't just include people, we set up beacons, and these beacons were attractions for people to come, and we invited them, and we welcomed them, and that's how we got inclusive, and that's how we got diverse. But beacons can also be set up as warnings. When you have language, as you've seen, what he was, even the way he talks, there are, they can be warnings, too. And those warnings are, drive people away, they're a deterrent from going in there, they are not welcoming, and they become exclusive. So he can say all day long that he doesn't turn people away, but his statements, his things in his documents, they turn them away before he has to look them in the eye to turn them away. Now apply that to every other shelter that we have. They might not do, I can't pronounce that word either, prophilitizationusniska? I don't even know, I ain't even close. But they might not do that either, but they do have these policies, they do have these thoughts, they do make these statements, and they do create this exclusion. I don't want us to look that, like we just doubled his capacity and now we have 200 beds and, oh my God, the homeless problem solved. It's not solved now, we need to do better, we need to diversify, and we need to get a shelter that is inclusive of everybody. So I hope the shelter's going well, because I'll be standing here with the letter again if it doesn't open.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Okay, we are adjourned.